We will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, April 18th, 2016. I ask HR to freeze rides for brief invocations to be followed by the Board of Management. Tonight, as the City Council meets in our regular session, we are ever mindful of the arrival of the spring and summer season and the many events and activities which will befall Batavia as we go forward. We just ask that a special blessing of safety be showered upon each and every one of us as we go about many things that will be offered throughout this summer in our community. And we are thankful for all the blessings that have been showered upon this town that allow us to enjoy so many variety of activities. Tonight, as always, we want to remember those who are serving our United States of America on foreign soil in defense of our liberties. We just ask that a special blessing be showered upon each and every one of them, along with all those from our country who are serving with them as they go about their vital mission. As always tonight, we also want to ask for guidance and vision and direction as we act on the various items of business before us, knowing that as a community, we are ever mindful that each of us is here to do what we can in our own hearts and minds to serve our community in the very best way we can. Tonight also, we want to pay tribute to those who are retiring from our community, knowing that they have served us well. And tonight also, we want to pay a special moment of blessing for the Valley Sheltered Workshop, which has served this community in such an outstanding fashion for so long and provided a very, very vital and heartrending service for many of us. So, we ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman Brown, would you lead us to the Budget reasons?
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Assistant City Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Atack?
Here.
Alderman Stark is absent. Alderman Chancet is absent. Wolf?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Homan?
Here.
Alderman Mueller is absent. Botterman?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
McFadden?
Here.
So, let the record reflect that we have eleven of the fourteen members of the City Council present in accounting force who have the necessary qualms to conduct business. We will move then to item number four, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Alderman Atack is Chairman of Governmental Services. Would you present this, please?
I don't think we need a closed session, at least that's what I've heard. Does anyone have any other opinion as to whether we need a closed session?
I think the only reason we had that on there was, as you see, item twenty-four is this appointment contract with John Dillon. And if anybody had any questions, we were going to talk about that in executive session. But I think we talked that out pretty good the other night at the committee meeting. And I don't -- anybody have anything? If not, well?
I'd like to go into executive session to discuss some issues, if I could.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Leave it on then.
All right. I know if nothing else.
Moving then to item number five, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Atack?
The consent agenda reads as follows. Place -- except in place on file, committee of the home minutes for November 5th, 2015, January 26th, February 23rd, March 8th, March 15th, and March 22nd, 2016. March 2016 building report, historic preservation minutes for February 22nd, March 14th, March 28th, 2016. Planned commission minutes and/or zoning board appeals for January 20th, February 3rd, and March 16th, 2016. Approvals, April 8th, 2016 payroll in the amount of $828,444. Accounts payable check register, $3,799,848.79. City council minutes for March 21st and April 4th, 2016. Resolution 16-34-R authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement with Illinois Department of Transportation for route maintenance of certain state routes. Order 16-17 amending the official zoning map at 500 and 501 West Wind Energy Pass, 502 and 503 Potawatomi Trail, and 427 Ridgeline Trail, City of Batavia. Order 16-18 amending the text of the zoning code. Approval of the purchase of the replacement of staff vehicle. Resolution 16-36-R budget amendment for the purchase of software. And resolution 16-41-R approving task order number three with engineering enterprises for the development of a water work system master plan for the amount not to exceed $136,143. I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Move by Alderman Atack, second by Alderman McFadden for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Okay, let the record reflect Alderman Mueller has entered the meeting. Other discussion? Clerk call the roll then on the consent agenda as presented.
Atack?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Botterman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. Twelve yes, no-nos, two absent. Okay, moving to item number six, which is a proclamation tonight honoring the 50th anniversary of the Valley Sheltered Workshop. Alderman Atack, do you want to read that, please?
Yes. Proclamation. Whereas in September, in September 1964 Reverend Gilbert Johnstone and six leading citizens from Batavia formed a committee to explore the possibility of establishing a sheltered workshop for the students who were of age to leave the valley for exceptional children. And whereas Reverend Johnstone was invited by the Furnace Foundation of Batavia to speak at a meeting regarding the purpose and goal of the proposed workshop which resulted in the Furnace Foundation supporting the establishment of a workshop in Batavia. And whereas on May 9th, 1966, Valley Sheltered Workshop opened at 4 North River Street in Batavia with Earl Sloggett as shop supervisor, Robert Bina as shop consultant from Furnace Electric Company, and four trainees who were members of former members of the Valley School for Exceptional Children. And whereas after renting space in two locations for fourteen years, Valley Sheltered Workshop moved into their new building at 325 Main Street in Batavia during March of 1980. Richard Ernstin of the Kiwanis Club of Batavia spearheaded the building project which was completed with the support and dedication of local tradesmen and volunteers. Whereas Valley Sheltered Workshop is celebrating a major milestone in its history while continuing to dedicate itself to its mission to empower the lives of adults with developmental disabilities within the Fox Valley area and to help them achieve the highest potential in all respects of their lives by providing an environment for friendship, learning, and above all, a source of livelihood. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor, and the City Council of the City of Batavia, Illinois congratulate Valley Sheltered Workshop of Batavia, Illinois in celebrating its 50th anniversary. Signed, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor.
Do you want to make a motion for that?
I move we approve the presentation of this proclamation.
Second.
Motion and second for the approval of the proclamation approving the honoring of the 50th anniversary of the Valley Sheltered Workshop. Clerk call the roll.
Atack?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Botterman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. Twelve yes, no-nos, two absent. Okay, moving to item number six, which is a proclamation tonight honoring the 50th anniversary of the Valley Sheltered Workshop. Alderman Atack, do you want to read that, please?
Yes. Proclamation. Whereas in September, in September 1964 Reverend Gilbert Johnstone and six leading citizens from Batavia formed a committee to explore the possibility of establishing a sheltered workshop for the students who were of age to leave the valley for exceptional children. And whereas Reverend Johnstone was invited by the Furnace Foundation of Batavia to speak at a meeting regarding the purpose and goal of the proposed workshop which resulted in the Furnace Foundation supporting the establishment of a workshop in Batavia.
So did that opportunity for the kids to know a police officer here, a police officer. Who here remembers Officer Mayor from the schools? So, quite a few of you have had Officer Mayor as a dare officer. One of the things I learned over the years was that I had to focus on intentionally doing positive things in this profession. If you let the negative parts of the job take over, you'll lose. One of those positive things I did was try to fill that void left by the elimination of the dare program. I'm not a trained dare officer, but I do know how to have lunch with the kids, give them tours of the PD, show up at their special events, and give high fives. Just doing those things gave them the opportunity to know an officer by name. There was no sweeter sound than hearing "Hi Officer Nalan Weg" as I patrolled your neighborhoods instead of "Hi Cop." I hope someday the dare program, or an equivalent program, is brought back into your schools so your kids have an opportunity to know an officer by name. They are our future. So, the department is already working on finding a replacement for me. My beloved Squad 85 has been reallocated to another officer, and the world keeps turning. I leave here content in knowing my family, and yours, is being protected by the finest men and women in law enforcement in Batavia Police Department. I am proud to have belonged to the BPD family, and I say the same for the dedicated employees of the Batavia Fire Department, our Public Works employee, and our ESDA employees, our EMAA employees. Without them, your quality of life wouldn't be what it is in this great city of ours. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve. And I have a thank you from PAC 103, Estesom School.
Okay, and our last presentation tonight, this April 29th will be Arbor Day, and so we have a proclamation. Alderman ATAC, would you read the proclamation for Arbor Day?
Proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas Batavia has been recognized as a tree city USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting ways, now therefore I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of the City of Batavia, Illinois, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 29th, 2016, is Arbor Day in the City of Batavia, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of this and future generations on this 29th day of April 2016. Signed, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor. I move that we accept this proclamation as read.
Second.
Motion second for the approval of the Arbor Day proclamation. Kirk call the roll.
ATAC?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Otterman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Twelve yes, no-nos, two absent. We have Gary Holm, our Director of Public Works, is here to accept the proclamation. And Gary, you want to make any comments about?
Thank you. I really didn't have words prepared tonight for Arbor Day, but I do appreciate the acknowledgement every year. It is important that we're a tree city, and as Alderman ATAC just read, all the importance of benefits of trees. So I think that it's good that the community acknowledges this every year. So, thank you.
And before I go back to my seat, I just want to ... Before I go back to my seat, I just want to make one little anecdotal story about Arbor Day for the benefit of those in the audience. In 1954 and 55, Batavia was devastated by what they called the Dutch Elm disease. And the Sop family, who, the surviving son Frank has been our city arborist for many years, was here and very much involved in that. And Frank told me the story that through Dutch Elm disease in the mid-1950s, you know, Batavia lost over 3,500 trees were taken down by that disease, and they were all well-matured trees. So as a result of that, they formed the first Batavia Tree Commission with the goal that over the next 10 years, they would replant those 3,500 trees. Well, Frank will probably tell you the story today that in those next 10 years, they planted double that many trees. And so now, in the last 15 years, with the real advanced growth of Batavia that we've experienced doubling our population, the estimate is that we've added another 10,000 to 12,000 more trees on the top of what we planted after Dutch Elm. So as you drive around our town today, and in the fall, you see all the leaves coming down, and all the big piles on the parkway, that's a tribute to all these folks that got into the whole tree planting Arbor Day movement, because Batavia probably has done it as well as anybody possibly could with, you know, there's someplace Frank tells me between 12,000 and 16,000 new trees in town since the Dutch Elm disease. So we've really come back with our glory on that. So I just wanted, as long as I had a captive audience here, I'd share that anecdotal story that we really do have a community of trees, probably second to none in the region. So I just want to thank everybody for their participation in that, and Batavia is very proud to be a town of being a tree city USA and one that does significantly honor Arbor Day. So, thank you all for coming. Okay, we will move on to item number nine, which is recognition of emergency management certification for the City of Batavia. I've asked Chief Dackey if he would present that, please.
The Mayor asked me to explain to you what the certification is all about. And the certification actually certifies our emergency management program so that it, and it verifies that we meet all the requirements of the Illinois Emergency Management Act. And so what does that require? It requires a certain amount of training that our ESDA people had to go through, a certain amount of training that our, many of our full-time staff had to go through in order to accomplish all the national incident management system training. It certifies that we completed our emergency operations plan, and that it meets all the requirements of the Emergency Management Act. And it also verifies that we've conducted several exercises in our emergency operations center, and the last of which was with the King County Office of Emergency Management, where they verified our exercise, and they ended up certifying us for meeting all the requirements there. So I know our ESDA group is very proud of it, and hopefully the certification will help us, and all the work that went into it, will help us bring a little bit of coordinated relief when any kind of a disaster comes to our town. So, any questions?
I think we have, what's remaining in the audience mostly are ESDA people. Am I correct in saying?
Yeah, pretty much.
Maybe could I ask them, just stand up so the council can see who all the ESDA folks are?
They do a very nice job, and volunteers are a critical backbone, I think, of any community out there, and they do a very nice job. They're there when you need them. They're probably in the background many times at anything from storms coming through to electric lines down and stuff like that. They're the ones that are out there blocking the streets, helping the workers and stuff like that. So, I'm very proud of them.
As we are, and I appreciate you are willing enough to volunteer your services on behalf of the citizens of Batavia. The jobs that they do are not an easy job. I mean, they talk about handing somebody some of the dirty work, and especially out there sitting under those severe storm clouds and walking for potential problems and isolating Batavia so that we're not overly responding or making noise that we have, getting people thinking we're burning too much. So, I always tell people, if there's any fire going in Batavia, we've seen something, and our people are there on the spot, and we need to take cover. This is not somebody just crying work. We are seriously monitoring what's going on, and so we do an outstanding job out, and we've got a good fire system in town now, and I think that we've got Elka standing pretty tall. So I'm very proud of the group that we have.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving to item 10, do we have management public for items not on the agenda? All right, we'll go to item number nine, which is the Main Street Minute, and we have Jamie Son, the executive director of the Batavia Main Street.
Hello. Before they all leave, I'd like to thank all of our ESDA volunteers also, because they help us at all of our downtown events, and they are also huge helpers at our farmer's market. So if we can give them another round of applause for helping us out. All right, well, obviously, we all know it's spring, because we've all been outside enjoying the sunny weather, which means that Main Street is fully in-depth in planning for spring and summer events, and a awesome season in our downtown. So, in the month of March, we had 115 volunteers donate 194 and a half hours for planning meeting programs and events. In the last few months, we've seen two, I put three, oh no, three, three longtime downtown businesses relocate into our downtown, which is kind of awesome that they're not leaving us, they're staying here and moving. So obviously, we all know that Walgreens is now up and running, but we also had Invitations etc., and Image Pro Services open in new downtown Batavia locations. So we always like to see when our businesses don't leave out of downtown, they stay here, they just find a new home and stay with us. Also opening in downtown on April 1st was the Room Fox Valley next to Water Street Studios. If anybody was able to go to Rim and Cunningham, got a little sneak preview, they're an escape room themed business with cryptic riddles and mind-bending puzzles as you escape reality and experience in this experience-based business. Might be a fun thing if the council decides to go on a retreat, right? On March 26th, if any of you guys have little kids, which I know some of you guys do, if you were downtown Batavia on that day, during the egg hop, there were over 1,500 people down here, which was a huge jump from last year, about 1,000 more people than attended this year than last year. Yeah, crazy, right? Super successful for everybody coming down. We had a bounce house this year. We partner with River City Church, there's music, there's fun, but the biggest benefit to us is that people are walking around and seeing our awesome downtown and businesses that we have down here. So they aren't normally doing that in the end of March, because the weather could potentially be bad, but we had a beautiful day and lots of people. We've got a couple things coming up, just to give you a quick overview. Next month, we're really going to give you guys some new details on the farmer's market, because that'll be opening on June 4th. But until then, we still have our indoor market. And if, I know lots of you posting on Facebook all your food pictures, but if you haven't gone to the indoor market, it's at 15 East Wilson Street at Gaetano's. Last Saturday, because it was beautiful, some of them were outside on the Gaetano's patio, but downstairs, Gaetano's is doing a little Italian deli and market. We've got all different vendors to get all of your stuff every week, and it runs from 9:00 until noon. And that'll actually run right into the outdoor market, so you guys won't miss a beat. You can shop local every Saturday until forever, pretty much, in downtown Batavia. We also, just briefly with the farmer's market, and I know I've mentioned this before, but just to reiterate it, get people thinking about it, we are bringing the Link-Snap Accessibility Program to our farmer's market this year, which means that local food is going to be accessible to everyone. Not just people coming down with cash, but people who use food stamps can come down to our farmer's market and purchase local goods, get to know who they're buying their food from, just like everybody else. So we'll start getting promotional materials about that out, educational materials, and we're going to look to you guys to help us get that information out. We just want to put it out at the food pantry, Batavia Apartments, at the library, everywhere we can, to inform everybody to come down that it's open, the farmer's market is open to everybody. Finally, just a couple quick things to put on your calendar. On May 1st, the Artisan Collective is going to partner with Water Street Studios to host an Arts and Artisan Collective after the Loyalty Day Parade. So enjoy the Loyalty Day Parade, go to the Bailey Shelter Workshop first thing for pancakes, then go do the parade, and then head over to Water Street Studios for local shopping, both with the artists. The Water Street artists will open up their galleries, and then we'll have artisans in there, too. On May 7th, Batavia Main Street will be partnering with Shine All Spoked Up and Limestone for the first of four shining spokes. There'll be a bike yoga and breakfast little morning. There is a $25 fee, but more information will be found on our website if you're interested in doing that. Just kind of exciting to have three downtown businesses partnering together to do some outdoorsy stuff, really focusing on the bike path, which is cool. We also have an exciting event coming up on June 11th. It's partnership between Water Street Studios and the Fox Valley Music Foundation, and it's called Blues on Water Street. Tickets will be available in advance, they're only going to sell 300, and Teranzo Cannon will be the headliner, and I guess he is one of the opening people for the Chicago Blues Fest. He's going to be amongst, I think, eight other people performing during that time at Water Street Studios, so it should be a really great time. And then finally, I know it's a little far in advance, but July 16th will be Cocktails in the Park, and you don't want to miss that, because that's our big fundraiser. So put that on your calendar now. If you want to find out anything else about Batavia Main Street, how to get involved, how to volunteer, just want some more information on your downtown, possibly how to open a business down here, you can call us at 630-761-3528, or visit us at downtownbatavia.com. Any questions?
Well, we thank Batavia Main Street for all they're doing. It seems like you get a wider and more diverse program with the passage of time, so thank you for your leadership and all you're doing to help Batavia really grow the downtown. Obviously, that it's having an impact.
That's good. Thanks, guys.
Okay, moving to item number 12. I think you should have gotten a memo from me. We'd like to reappoint, I'd like to reappoint Dennis Anderson for a second three-year term as a member of the Batavia Board of Fire and Police Commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Otterman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Twelve yes, no-nos, two absent. Okay, moving to item 13, which is Ordinance 16-19, revising Title III of the Batavia Municipal Code, creating a new Class B liquor license.
Drew is going to take ...
Alderman McFadden?
Yeah, I will take that. So this was to allow the liquor sales at gas stations. We'd had requests from several longtime Batavia businesses, as well as some new-to-town businesses, had asked us to take this under advisement, which we did at the March 22nd Committee of the Hall. Had a good discussion with input from the police chief, and the end result of that was, we felt it would be all right to allow liquor sales at gas stations. That resulted in creating of two new, two new proposed classes of liquor license. Be a B4 license, which allows the retail sale of beer and wine only, and a B5 license that allows the retail sale of any alcoholic liquor. Same sort of rules apply to the gas stations as to anywhere else, you got to be 21 to sell liquor. Anybody who's selling has to be Basset-trained, and I think that about covers it. The fee for either license will be $750 per year. So with that, I'd make a motion that we approve Ordinance 16-19, creating two new liquor license classes for the, for liquor sales at gas stations.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McFadden, and second by Alderman Callahan, I guess, for the approval of the new Class B liquor category. Any discussion? Alderman ATAC?
I just have a question, it's not that important, but why do we have two lice, two categories?
Good question. One was to allow all sales, and one was beer and wine only.
Okay, but you can sell beer and wine if you get all sales, if you buy the one with all sales for the same price.
Right, and it's noted that there's going to be a review of the fees, an upcoming review of the fees that we charge for various liquor licenses.
So we might change the fees?
So it's possible that the fees would change.
Okay.
I mean, I think the experience of other cities, and I've talked to a couple other mayors about this, has been that most seem to want to just do the beer and wine thing. But then there are some that want to expand it, but when they expand it, most of them are struggling to come up with the refrigeration space to put in other types of alcohol in there. And so it's become somewhat of a complex situation. There were, some, one town told me that they noticed that the stores were taking other products out altogether, and wanted to almost turn themselves into a liquor store versus a gas station. And so I think what we're trying to do here is kind of put it out there and kind of hopefully massage it and fine-tune it as we go, so that we don't get ourselves into an experience where somebody's got what used to be a gas station, but now it's basically a liquor store. And, you know, we probably, there has to be someplace along the way there that we kind of step in and say, okay, if you're going to go to this, we're going to have to have a different style license or whatever. We're just kind of making this up as we go, based on what everybody else is telling me their experiences have been. It's kind of like the other night when I brought in the massage allowance from North Chicago. You know, there's different levels of experience, one gets themselves into it, you do these type of things, and I think ours is going to be, you know, kind of, let's find out where we're going here. So I think we're just trying to set it up so we can have multiple categories.
Thank you.
Chief Sheller, you have any comments on that one?
I just want to say that the hours of operations, I mean, 9:00 AM, 11:00 PM, which is consistent with the retail package liquor store, so it's the same hour. So even if the gas station is a 24-hour operation, it would not be able to sell liquor beyond those hours.
Thank you for that clarification. Anybody else questions? All right then, I ask the Kirk to call the roll on Ordinance 16-19.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Twelve yes, no-nos, two absent. Moving to item number 14, which is Resolution 16-32-R, authorizing execution of contract for drainage investigation with WBK Engineering for an amount not to exceed $27,472.37. Alderman Wolf, you have this in City Services?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a contract with WBK Engineering, basically looking at the east side, Ward 1, drainage problems that we've had, especially evident last year. So we want to go in and start doing this work. This is part of what we had budgeted to spend this year to go after things in Ward 1. Anybody have any questions or comments? I know it's, probably not as much as we'd like to do, but it's where we have to start.
I have one question. I know it was brought up with the Mahoney Creek Tributary, that we're thinking a lot of Fermilab water drains through that tributary, and we're going to try to do something in Fermilab itself. Has anything been decided on that?
I don't think anything's been decided yet, but WPK is also, I believe, doing work for Fermilab. So them having their hand in both sides of Kirk Road, I think, is a good thing, and in both projects, I think will be very good moving forward, because they should be able to coordinate that, coordinate the work with both sides.
But the balance, the majority of this study that they're doing here is, is south of Pine, and south of Pine is a lot higher than the Mahoney Creek Tributary area, the residents there. It's a lot lower. They take a lot of the drainage also from the people south of Pine, so I just wanted to make sure, just try to alleviate some of that pressure on that tributary.
Gary, you want to?
The area that we're going to be studying south of Pine actually is tributary to Indian Creek, so it actually goes, flows to the southeast, it doesn't flow northward to Mahoney. The city has had, the city has had an easement on Fermi property for 20-plus years to allow for drainage. There's actually a restrictor on the east side of Kirk, although no one in their recollection can recall water being actually held on Fermi's property, which tells me that at one point in time, those calculations were thought to be correct, but in reality, they haven't proven to be. So we would have to go back and reevaluate the engineering for the east side of Kirk, probably do some regrading to introduce more storage, so that's a complete separate project. Staff has identified that project, we included it on our list of overall stormwater improvements that are needed, and basically, it's just a matter of funding at this point.
I just know, I know what you said about the tributary, but the people up on, just south of Pine, or maybe not south of Pine, a little north of Pine, I guess, a lot of those, they're still higher, and they do drain down into the tributary.
There's a break.
And those people whose homes and yards are, as in obstruction, are getting flooded out, and so, as you well know.
There's no argument. It's just a matter of dollars and cents.
I know. So, well, maybe I, well, just one last point, because it is, there's people in my ward, my neighbors who are being flooded out, is, it's just maybe another plus for stormwater utility, you know, another shot for that. So, all right, thank you.
Anybody else?
I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 16-32-R, authorizing execution of the contract for Ward 1 drainage investigation with WBK Engineering for the amount not to exceed $27,472.37.
Second.
Here we have a motion by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Fisher, for the approval of Resolution 16-32-R for the investigation on the drainage work. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Otterman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Twelve yes, no-nos, two absent. Moving to item 15, which is Resolution 16-37-R, authorizing execution of an easement agreement for Riverbank Erosion Investigation. Alderman Wolf, do you have this one?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Your Honor. This is part of our investigation into the erosion occurring along the Fox River in downtown. This would be an easement from private landowners along 33 North Island, and they have agreed to give us an easement so we can investigate what we need to do back there to stop the erosion. Anybody have any questions? Okay. I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 16-37-R, authorizing execution of the easement agreement for Riverbank Erosion Investigation.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Homan, for the approval of Resolution 16-37-R for the Riverbank Erosion Investigation. Any discussion further? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Otterman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
ATAC? Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Resolution 16-37-R is approved, 12 yes, no no's, two absent. Moving item number 16, which is motion authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign a deed for property on Walnut Street. Who's got this one?
I'll take it, Your Honor.
Alderman Brown?
This is a small little piece of property that staff identified as excess property. We saw that there was never going to be another need for this piece of property to be retained by the city in a future time. So they came to the state, to the Cow, and suggested that we put it up for sale. The whole agreed to put it up for sale, advertise it for sale. The only bidder on it was the adjacent bidder, which is Peter and Leslie Kraft, and they're located at 912 Walnut Street. Their offer, their bid was 80% of the appraised value, which is the minimum amount allowed that we can accept for a piece of property. And in order for this to pass, we do need a two-thirds majority vote, so we'll need 10 votes on this council in order for this to pass. As I said, it was discussed at the committee and recommended for approval, so I move that we approve the motion for the mayor and the city clerk to sign the deed for the property on Walnut Street for the amount of 20, or $2,240.
Second. Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Callahan, for the approval of the motion for signing the deed for the Walnut Street property transfer. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Boderman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Resolution 16-37-R is approved, 12 yes, no no's, two absent. Moving item number 17, which is Resolution 16-39-R, Downtown Improvement Matching Grant for Tea Tree at 29 North River Street. Who's got this one?
Do you have this, Dave?
Dave, do you have this?
I'll take it. It's under Government Services, but I'll take it. Tea Tree came to us with the application for Downtown Improvement Matching Grant. They are in the process of remodeling that portion of the building, and they ran into some restrictions by the county where, because of what they're going to be doing, they're going to need to put in a grease trap, underground grease trap, which is quite extensive in cost and more than what they had anticipated. Now, saying that, whether they had anticipated or not, it does qualify for the matching grant program. So I was certainly in favor for granting this. This is something that we like to see done in our town. That's what the grant program is all about. We try to really encourage where the money that they're asking for is money, obviously it has to follow their criteria, but one of the best places I think that it can be used for is in something that will stay with the building. It improves the building, so whether this business moves on to another location in town because they're growing in size or what have you, this is some improvement that will stay with the building that will hopefully attract another business to town. So the committee discussed it, and the committee recommended approval to the city council for the amount of $9,500 not to exceed. I move that we approve Resolution 16-39-R.
Second. Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman McFadden, for the approval of Resolution 16-39-R for the matching grant for Tea Tree, about $9,500, did you say?
$9,500.
Okay. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Boderman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Boderman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Resolution 16-37-R is approved, 12 yes, no no's, two absent. Your Honor? Alderman Brown?
The applicant is here, if she could speak, if she wouldn't mind. It's free advertising, it's on TV.
Yeah, we...
What's going in?
Why don't you tell us a little bit about what Tea Tree is?
Sure, I absolutely can. First off, I want to say that this is my first city council meeting in Batavia, and that was very exciting. A lot of applauses. I'm kind of, I don't get any. Everybody's gone now. But the Tea Tree is a new business coming to Batavia. It is a retail shop that will be selling teas, spices, gourmet oils and vinegars, and essential oils with all the accessories that go with each of those. I'm very excited to be opening, and I'm excited that I get this grant because it will help me open a lot sooner than if I didn't get it. It's almost there. I did have Susan come in the other day and her husband to come and look at the property, and that was actually very exciting for me to have one of the city council members come and visit. So if you guys are in town, please stop by. It's always nice to know your faces with a name. I have to learn all of that. So hopefully, the Tea Tree will be opening in the middle of May, if not definitely by the first farmer's market on June 4th, which I hear is a very exciting time in downtown Batavia. So again, thank you for your time, for your votes for this grant, and I'm very excited to open.
Very pleased to have you here, and we wish you many years of business growth and expansion as you put your feet down on the ground in downtown Batavia. We hope you're a longtime resident and client of our downtowns.
So do I.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman?
Nice job on your first one to get us to give you money and applause for that.
Yes. Thank you.
Do you have a website?
Not yet. I'm still in the process of making that. Again, everything's being done by myself, all of the build-out. I have no contractors. So with that being said, the website's going to be all me as well. That's a little time-consuming. I am going to visit my family for probably the last time in a year or so. I'm going to Ireland at the end of the month. So I'm going to have plenty of time to work on my website while I'm on that plane and put in all of my inventory into my new POS system, so really no sleep, but I will have that up and running hopefully before the shop is open.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, moving to item 18, which is approval of Class F liquor license for Water Street Studios musical performance, May 27, 2016.
Okay, Water Street Studio has applied for a Class F liquor license for their musical performance on May 27. They've also asked that we waive the liquor license fee. The police department has conducted an investigation and found no reason why we shouldn't grant this application and has asked that we approve it tonight. So I move that we grant Water Street Studios a Class F liquor license and waive the fee for the one-day event on Friday, May 27, 2016.
Second. Moved by Alderman ATAC, second by Alderman McFadden, for the approval of the Class F liquor license for Water Street Studios for May 27 and the waiver of the fee. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
ATAC?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Boderman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
Motion's approved, 12 yes, no no's, two absent. Moving item 19, is the administrator's report. Mr. McGrath?
Thanks, Mayor. As I mentioned earlier in my status update, the staff met last week with the representatives from the Kane County Department of Transportation. They're starting to review the next five-year set of assumptions that will lead to the creation of the formula for its transportation impact fee, which is assessed on anyone who builds a structure in Kane County. That goes from residential homes to commercial to industrial. It's a very important fee. You know, we understand why, why the county charges that fee. It's not an unusual fee as far as counties go. They really run kind of the regional transportation systems, especially beneficial to Batavia with Kirk and Randall and Fabian Parkway. But we did want to meet with them to make sure that we understood what the assumptions are that go into that so that when the impact fee is finally determined, that it's a fair one, because it's a significant fee. It can be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars for an industrial project, and of course, an extra $200,000 or $300,000 can really have a big impact on a pro forma. In any event, that meeting was, it was good. We don't think that there are any significant changes that we can advise them that would actually result in a change. We're going to continue to monitor that. Scott will be at a public hearing tomorrow night to indicate support for the fee in general, but also, you know, cautioning against a significant change. The county actually, because of the recession, reduced the fees or credited everyone with about a 50% reduction for the last several years, and they've voted to continue that through the year of 2016. So that is a big help. We have a couple of, it could be big projects, and it would be very important to help them come to Batavia if that fee remains reduced. And we'll let you know as that happens. I don't think, believe that they'll have the new fee until the end of 2016, and on top of that, there's still a chance that they will, they will determine a fee, but then talk about reductions because of the economy. In any event, we are working with, with individual businesses to take advantage of some credits for that fee. For example, if a company brings all of its materials in, if it's a manufacturer brings all its materials in by rail instead of using the road system, there's a way we can get a credit towards a reduction of that fee. So it's things like that. If it's, say, an apartment complex or housing in the core of the city, then if it's near mass transit, if it's, if it's near a grocery store, if it's near definite services so that they know people won't have to be in cars all the time to get their basic services, then that's also the kind of thing we get a credit for. So we'll be working with that. As you all know, John Dillon, 37-year employee and now superintendent of Water and Sewer, announced his retirement in this, for this July. We're reviewing the responses for the river erosion control project. We have five firms that responded, and I believe this will be coming to Cow the last, either the last Cow in April or the first Cow in May. Let's see, the Deer Path Road Bridge, Deer Path Bridge is really happening. It's, the road is formally closed off, the detour is in place. Alderman McFadden tells me that the detour seems to be working. Of course, this is the first day that it's been in place in terms of affecting the school buses, but we haven't received any calls, so apparently it's working smoothly. We're having an engineering firm come in and educate the staff a bit about brownfields, which are contaminated pieces of property formerly, generally formerly industrial or mechanic repair stations, things like that. It's a real problem for redevelopment. We're looking at some sites, particularly in West Town. One thing the federal government has maintained through, even through the recession actually, is helping communities deal with some of their brownfields. So we're, having an engineering firm is going to come up and educate us more as we start looking at West Town, and if we think it would be beneficial, we'll be working with owners and then ultimately coming back and seek your approval to draft some grant applications to clean up some properties. Mr. Balling will be reporting to you next Tuesday about the individuals he and the city team are recommending for interviews for the new city, for the new city administrator. Staff will be interviewing them during the afternoon. They'll be taking on tours of the city during the afternoon, and at this point, I think the mayor wanted to check with you to see whether the recommended evenings of Tuesday, May 17, and Thursday, May 19 are acceptable to the council. I think they're planning on three one-hour-long interviews, so I don't know whether, Mayor, you want, you would like that meeting to start a little earlier than normal or what you would like.
I think we're looking at starting at 6:00 and hopefully over with by 9:00, and then Bill wants to have kind of a critique at the end of each night of the council as to your thoughts about the candidates and, you know, kind of narrow it down further so that he can come back to you with some, you know, real, real finalists, maybe two or so. So we'll see how it all comes together, so. But the 17th and the 19th are the, that's the Tuesday night and a Thursday night, the third week in May are the two nights that we're looking at. Okay. Hopefully, everybody can be here. It's probably one of the more important things you're going to get to do here in the next year or so, so it's, like to have as much input and say-so from each of them and every one of you as we possibly can get.
The staff has reported that the sidewalk contractor is doing a great job, proceeding very rapidly. I've seen some of the work. It seems to be done very well, so hopefully they'll be in and out of the community quickly. We did meet last week to review the draft of an ordinance creating a massage establishment licensing system. This was a follow-up to the Cow meeting of last week. Kevin is making a few changes. We are asking for the assistance of some of the licensed massage therapists who attended the meeting and are licensed out of Batavia. We'll be getting that draft, I understand from Kevin, tomorrow and work on that again, and we'll get that up to you as soon as we can. We've had a lot of discussions about the extent of that in terms of whether we should not have that extend to places such as salons or spas that do offer massages, and to this point, we will be recommending that those places also get a local license, and this is a way that we think we can try and control that activity, which unfortunately is exploited by a few people. The license fee, I think, will be very, very nominal, and so we'll bring that to you as soon as we can. Additionally, I think this is another, we've talked to you a few times about business registration. I think that the staff will be coming to you sometime in the late summer or early fall to talk about that again because they believe that with a business registration process in place, that we may be able to get an idea or spot some issues before people get further into it and sign leases or put money into spaces, et cetera. May talk about doing it, having no charge for the first year. It'll give us an opportunity to do a zoning check, fire inspection, depending on what the use is, but I think that's related to arise the discussion on the massage establishment, so, but that'll be later. I wanted to remind everybody that the 2030 Annual Citywide Garage Sale is coming up. It's on April, it's on Friday, April 29, and Saturday, April 30. You can go to the city website front page for details, and you can help support the Fourth of July fireworks by participating in that.
The plan commission meeting scheduled for Wednesday at seven thirty is still scheduled. One item on their agenda that I'm aware of, and that is the Batavia United Methodist Church Comp Plan Amendment and rezoning for the building located at twenty-one North Water Street. Historic Preservation is still scheduled to meet April twenty-fifth. It's a Monday at five thirty, and that's all I have.
Okay. Government Services, Alderman ATAC?
April twenty-sixth, Government Services will be approving an economic development consultant contract, reviewing developers' requests for financial incentive. And on May third, we'll be discussing a downtown Tiff redevelopment agreement for twelve East Wilson Street and a downtown Tiff amended redevelopment agreement for twenty-seven, twenty-nine North River Street. And on May second, at the city council meeting, we'll be approving the economic development consulting contract incentive analysis. That's it.
Okay. City Services, Alderman Wolf?
Your honor, we don't have anything on the committee of the whole meeting until May tenth, which at that point will be a recommendation for award of the Riverbank Restoration Engineering Consultants.
Okay.
Thank you.
Public Utilities, Alderman O'Brien?
Your honor, we have nothing on the agenda for April or May.
Okay. All right, moving then to twenty-one other businesses. Do we have any other business to come up? Alderman Callahan?
I attended the Tri-Cities Family Services Gala this past weekend, and there was a great turnout with a bunch of Batavia residents that were actually there supporting that, and they raised a lot of money. And one of the, one of the hot items for bidding on, at our table anyways, was the, the three mayors each had a day with, and there were several of us trying to bid yours up, but I believe Regina had the home rule advantage of succeeding, of getting the most votes on that one.
You just ruined my night.
But the, but as we were bidding all back and forth, there were several of us that kind of like nudged me and my wife, being one of them, said, "You sit and listen to them every, every week. Why would you pay more?" So that led somebody else saying that maybe you ought to keep your best of historical secrets for the tour, because actually, everybody thought it was probably the best package out of everybody with the wealth of knowledge, and the group that did win it are very excited about it, and they're three-year residents, two-year residents to town, so they've got a huge plan, and you have your work cut out for you.
I think I said they could bring twenty people or something.
And they are. I think they're planning a wedding party for it.
Really?
Engagement party.
Okay. Well, whatever. Always a new twist in this business. Thanks for that preview.
Yes.
Anybody else? Okay, under the mayor's report, very quickly, as it's already been alluded to, the annual Loyalty Day Parade is coming up, and the theme of the parade this year is Flag Day. And so, that being the case, we, I still have upstairs in my office the flag that we carried last year, and so I think we would, if it's all right with you, I'm going to suggest that we do that again this year. And we, the flag, all as you may remember, has little hole handles on it, and so we just unveil it and carry it down the street. It was, a lot of people took pictures. It was quite well-known, and I think there was a good wide acceptance to it that we did it that way, and this year being Flag Day, I think it's a special time for us to do it, so hopefully, most of you can come. It's not an easy thing to carry that thing by ourselves, so we need all fourteen of you, plus spouses, if we have some that are willing to come and help do it. So as you may remember, that flag is, if you were trying to carry it by yourself, you'd be carrying quite a load, so it's a pretty good size. And then again, so everybody is fully apprised, on June twelfth and fourteenth, we are going to have a two-day, two-different-day Flag Day event in Batavia. Twelfth is a Sunday afternoon, and there's going to be a number of musical events at the Peg Bonn Center that day, and then Alderman Callahan's putting together a soapbox derby. Am I correct in saying that?
A derby race. We can't say soapbox.
What?
We can't say soapbox.
That's right. What are we calling it?
Derby race.
Derby race.
You can't, you have to take one of them off.
Yeah, all right.
To make it legal.
Okay. So we're having a derby race, and you want to say anything about that, or?
We are going to be going up Houston Street and finding the correct spot so that people don't end up in the river going too fast, but it's a, a non-motored vehicle that's got to be able to steer, got to be able to brake, and we're going to see how fast we can get it. I believe Alderman Wolf has loaned a vehicle in which he's going to send my boys down the hill, so.
So are you going to be in this yourself?
No, I am judging it. I am judging it.
I may have an entry.
Yes.
You're going to be in it?
Might have to start at the top of the hill, though.
Okay. All right. And then on the fourteenth, we're going to have a, it's kind of been, kind of a night, early evening night event, and we're going, also on the twelfth, there's going to be an ice cream social, and they're going to sell hot dogs in benefit of the fireworks fund. And then later that day, they're going to have a forming of a human American flag on the Houston Street Hill, and I guess we're doing it with place cards, and so we need at least, they told us at the meeting last week, at least two-hundred-and-eighty-seven people to make this flag work, and more, more would be better than less. So we may be calling for Aldermanic volunteers on that one if we get the chance. And then on the fourteenth, there's going to be another concert at the Peg Bonn Center featuring the U.S. Air Force Band, and then we're going to also have a luminary on the Riverwalk that night of seventeen-hundred-and-seventy-seven candles in commemoration that the first American flag was approved by the Continental Congress on June fourteenth, seventeen-seventy-seven. And so we did that luminary one other time in tribute to those who were lost on nine-eleven a year after the event. It was an extremely popular event. If the weather cooperates, I would think we would have a similar-sized group of folks this time around, so. So please mark those days on your calendar if you, if you get the chance, because I think those will be kind of special moments in Batavia this coming year. And again, I'd ask your, see if you can readjust your schedule so on May seventeenth and nineteenth, you can plan to be here and meet the prospective candidates for city administrator, and it'll be, you'll be doing an interview of them one at a time, so it'd be about a three-hour exercise each evening. So. All right, that being said, we, I guess we need a motion for a closed session.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman O'Brien, second by Alderman Callahan. Kirk call.
Why are we, you have to say the reason for the closed session?
Baptist church. I wanted to have a discussion on...
Sale of the Baptist church?
Sale of the Baptist church.
Okay. Kirk call the roll.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.